Call the regular September Board of Trustees meeting to order. Asking everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated and welcome to the meeting. I'll ask Peggy to call the roll.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Bryden Paul.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flunder.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion for approval for the amendment to the agenda, and I've been handed a couple of other amendments in addition trustees to the ones that Peggy's provided for you on the sheet. One more second.
We need to know what the amendments are.
Now that we've motioned a second, we'll discuss what they are, okay? Actually, what we want to do is, under items 10 and 11, that calls for some introductions of some folks that are here to move those up in the agenda so those folks can get on with their regular business.
We're moving it up to Communication or the President's Report.
We're moving it up into the President's Report.
Okay.
Item number seven.
I move acceptance of the amendments now as explained.
Second. All right.
Don, is there anything besides what's listed under 10 and 11 that were moved?
You have the sheet that Peggy provided for you, and then we're going to move these introductions up. One of them's under item number 10, Vice President for Academic Affairs Report, recognitions of Mr. Stafford and Dr. Ramos Reyes. The other one is under item 11, Vice President for Student Administration Andrea Wilcox. We're moving those two items up into the President's Report.
That was my question, was it all being moved or just a couple of items? And you're saying there's just one item out of each area that's being moved?
Just those two specific things.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes in the August 13 VOT meeting? Trustee Townsend motions.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Audience to-
I have one question.
Hold on.
Ms. Lynn, do we need to do a separate approval of the Budget Meeting Minutes?
You will. Yes, Dr. Daniels. My thought was that that was coming later under your miscellaneous, you can do it now if you like.
I want to move approval of the Budget Hearing Minutes.
A second.
Okay, there's been a motion, move approval of the Budget Meeting Minutes and a second. Any question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Ray. All right. Audience to patrons and petitioners, is there anyone here that would wish to speak or address the Board this afternoon? Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. You're welcome.
I'm actually Jared Hill from the Intercultural Center. We wanted to bring up a couple of students to address the Board on their experiences with two organizations in the community.
Okay.
Again, thank you for your time this afternoon. I'm Jared with the Intercultural Center. I'm joined by Anna Romero and Lucia Martinez, who are BizFest students here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Both of them are quite involved with their campus and also their community, and today I wanted to take the opportunity to bring these ladies in front of the Board and allow them to speak of their experiences with the Juntos program and also with the Health Enrichment Initiative through KU Medical Center. If you recall, a year ago, we were able to bring a couple of students before the Board and allow them to share their experiences. And the Juntos program and the Health Science Enrichment Institute through KU Medical Center, these two programs occur over a series of six weeks and provide internships to individuals from underrepresented groups. These programs also ensure each candidate a guaranteed interview with a medical program at KU, and their work and completion of the internship program easily merits their consideration for these programs. These ladies have worked hard for their recognition, have made KCKCC noticed among these groups, and both initiatives now turn to KCKCC each year seeking excellence and hardworking students just like Anna and Lucia. And we owe them a great deal of thanks for their excellent representation in the community. And lastly, I'd like to thank both Anna and Lucia for their dedication, their scholarship, and their excellent examples to the BizFest program and other students involved, and also a reminder of the abundant talent that exists on this campus. And I'll let them go ahead and kind of share their experiences with you today.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucia Martinez. I am currently a student at KCKCC, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, but-
That's all right.
Okay, today I'm here to talk about the Health Career Pathways Enrichment Program. That program I attended from May 28 to July 3. It's a six-week program that helps students that would like to become doctors. My experience was great. I was unsure on the medical field after the program, I am sure of what I want to do. We had a lot of hands-on. They took us to Penn Valley Community College to do like a scenario kind of thing, us being the doctors, and we did great. We didn't kill anyone. There are three levels of this program. We got Level 1, 2, and PAP. The PAP was like for students to prepare for the MCAT, which is a big deal for medical school. And I was actually on the Level 1. I hope to return next year, because, yeah, next year, because I really loved it. It was a great experience, and I will do it again. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Anna Romero. I was an inter for Juntos Center for Advancing Latino Health. I worked under Mariana Ramirez in the Breast Cancer Awareness for Latinas. We worked on a program designing a brochure for, I forgot what they're called, hold on. Give me a minute, I forgot what they were called.
Thank you, Dan.
Promotoras de salud, okay. Promotoras de salud, which are women who work with El Centro. They go out to the community and they talk to Latina women, Hispanic families, and they talk about different organizations that will be able to help them because, you know, obviously healthcare access is difficult for them. So I worked under Mariana, and we worked with the Breast Cancer Awareness. It's really hard to develop a brochure, so we didn't really get past that point. Other things that I got to do was assist health fairs. And I also got to give a presentation at the end of my time of what I did there. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, ladies, for your report, and it's great to hear you had such wonderful success and how enthusiastic you are about moving forward, so, thank you. Any other patrons?
I'd like to, for Commissioner Anne McGee, who's on the Board of Regents, come and say something to us.
Is she heart and sweet?
No, you can take your time, Commissioner. That's where your money come from, Dodo.
Well, I'd just like to say it's nice to be here. It's my first Kansas City, Kansas Community College visit, and it's a pleasure to be here amongst all of you. I'm honored to be appointed by the Governor to the Kansas Board of Regents. If you didn't know, that occurred in July, and I was just confirmed, I believe it was last month. So it's a four-year term, and I just wanted to say if any of you have any suggestions or questions or concerns, you're always welcome to call me and provide me with any information that you think would make us better Regents for all of our universities across the state of Kansas. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Anne, for being here. We appreciate it very much. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Take care, wind out.
I have, I'll ask Dr. Gibbons if she has any additional communications to what I have.
I do.
Okay.
We have one letter that I'd like to have read to the Board from Leavenworth, and I think I'd prefer for Mr. Bodie to read that letter, please.
A week or so ago, there was an incident in Leavenworth. A student was competent enough in that incident to come to Ms. Marcia Irvine, stand up Marcia, please, the Assistant Director at the Leavenworth Center. Marcia took the time to listen to the student, called the Leavenworth Police, Leavenworth Police took over the situation. The young lady needed a ride to the hospital. Marcia rode along with her to the hospital after going through, I think, her whole rolodex trying to get ahold of somebody up here because we were all stuck in different meetings. And we're very proud that she stepped up and took care of one of our students in that. And then we got a letter from the Leavenworth Police Department, says, "Ms. Irvine, I wanted to thank you again for all your help yesterday with the student, and also for taking time out of your day to be with her and also transport her to Shawnee Mission Medical. That was very kind of you, and I'm sure she is appreciative as well. Again, we appreciate your help and are grateful to all the caring citizens that will assist others. If you need anything or have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Detective Danielle Herrig, Leavenworth Police Department." And so we wanted to recognize Marcia today for going above and beyond the normal of what we expect from our staff, so thank you very much.
Well done, Marcia, thank you. All right, I have some resolutions. I'll take them one at a time, read them, and then we'll consider motions to either approve and deny. The first is a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA 41-719-I, whereas Kansas Statute's Annotated 41-719-C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property except where expressly permitted by law, and whereas the Kansas City, Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41-719-C specified property which is under the control of the Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Section 1, KCKCC hereby exempts for Wednesday, October 16, 2013, the Commons Area, the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center, from the requirement of KSA 41-719-C. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the Wyandotte Economic Development Council Quarterly Meeting.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval and a second. Question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC in the meeting held September 17 today. Second resolution is a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA 41-719-I, whereas Kansas Statute's Annotated 41-719-C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property except where expressly permitted by law, and whereas the Kansas City, Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA 41-719-C specified property which is under the control of the KCK Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of KCKCC. Section 1, KCKCC hereby exempts for Saturday, October 19, 2013, the banquet area of the Jewel Center from the requirements of KSA 41-719-C. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of a dinner and performance event titled "A Night in the Heights."
Question, is that a performance by our theater department?
Yes.
We're trying to get- Motion for the resolution. Second.
I move, okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Now, additional questions or comments? Mr. Bodie?
Trying to get a group of people in the community to be supporters, patron-type supporters, to our theater arts programs, our performing arts program. And Dr. Walker worked on this program to get a solid group of patrons for our theater group. They're having a dinner theater that night. This is part of the dinner and then the theater after, and I ask that you please consider that if we're looking for dinner theater guests, they're going to want to have a glass of wine or something with their dinner that night. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions or comment?
Have we had such a performance where the people may have had such beverages at their disposal prior to the performance? Whoever can answer.
I don't remember in the time that I've been here that we've had a dinner theater, no.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm modeling this largely on the Hot Latin Nights project, which occurred approximately three falls ago. At that point, the performance was given by, I believe, the Kansas City Jazz Orchestra, and there was a reception, light hors d'oeuvres, held in the Intercultural Center beforehand. You are correct in making this distinction that that performance was done by professional musicians as opposed to students. However, the geography and the layout is intentionally somewhat similar. Alcohol consumption will be in conjunction with dinner and confined to this area where we are presently, which has glass doors on either end. Alcohol will not be served at the intermission of the theater and so forth, and it is an advanced sale-only event. We have support for the event from El Centro and some other community and campus organizations, and we are using it frankly as a bit of a test case to see if we can build an audience for a small, for a modest subscription series that would be catering to the taste of Wyandotte County residents. As you know, live theater opportunities or live performance opportunities are somewhat limited in this immediate area. So that's the logic behind a trustee request.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no additional comments, then we'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's passed and approved by the Board of Trustees in this meeting held September 17, 2013. The third resolution contains all of the same pertinent language and statutory references that the first two did, and is sought for exempting the statute for consumption of alcohol the first Saturday of November, which is November the 2nd, 2013, and the banquet areas of the Jewel Center, which is where we are located. And the exemption, section 2, is the exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the annual Mid-America Education Hall of Fame Banquet.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, or the comment or question?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion and the resolution passes. So I'll be sure we get all those signed after the meeting. Thank you, everyone. All right. Item number seven is the President's Report. Dr. Gibbons?
Yes, Mr. Tier. We have, first of all, a report from Barbara Clark Evans, a report on the AAUW and the Summer Institute for Students.
Hi, folks. How are you? We just wanted to give you an update on our AAUW grant from last year, and you already heard from our students from the Summer Institute and Hutos, but we'll give you the opportunity to hear from our AAUW students as well.
All right, where do we begin? I left my notes over there. We have more membership this year amongst faculty, staff, and administration. We are working to develop some more grants. We had two very successful programs last spring, one on student debt and the other one about the pay gap. We're working hard to support our students with scholarship, opportunities, mentoring, and activities that they can be engaged in. One of the highlights of this last year that I was involved with was taking our two students, who will be speaking to you shortly, to the National American Association of University Women National Conference in New Orleans. And although we had a challenging time getting there, we persevered, we had some transportation issues, and it was one of the best conferences, I believe, that are available probably to young university and college women in the United States.
As part of our grant program last year, we had to have a student represent us, we actually had to. We were able to, with the help from the Kansas City, Missouri AAU, also send an additional student to the national conference known as NICWhistle, where they presented our grant program and our results to the conference group there. And so I'm going to have Eva come up and talk about that first, and then we'll have T join her to talk about the conference in New Orleans.
The NICWhistle Conference is the National Conference of College Women Student Leaders. I was able to go, I actually presented on our CAP grant that we received from the AAU. It was a very intriguing experience, something that I had never experienced before. It was a huge conference, there were thousands of people there. One of our opening speakers, her name was Marcia Gunzler-Stevens, you may or may not have heard of her, but her theme was "Finding Your Voice." She had us go through a number of activities where we were standing up, and she would ask everybody what their opinion was on various topics that plague women in politics and in general. After that, we actually split up, and we were broken down into three groups. I was in the largest group, I think both of us were. It was about 400 people in our group alone. If I can tell you how many people were there, it was outrageous. When we went in the room, there was no furniture, none at all, not even a chair, not a desk, nothing. There on the wall, they were all blank except for one piece of paper on each of the walls that had either an emotion, or a direction, or region of the country or the world. So we're all just standing there like we have no idea what's going on, and the woman finally comes in who's going to be officiating our smaller, or our smaller group. And at first, this networking event began with her asking us to go to the region that we came from, like wherever our school was. And then we went to the region that we were originally from, unfortunately both mine were, you know, the Midwest, so I didn't get to experience too many other people. And then we would go through a series of events. She would read us an event, and we would have to go to whatever emotion that that basically triggered within us. And in each of these times, we had to break up into smaller groups, no more than five people, so we got to know people from all over the world and all over the United States. A few of the people that really stuck out, there were a couple girls from Jamaica, who I, on different occasions, had the privilege of being in their group. They were quite interesting, they had far different views than what most of the other people did in our groups, so that was kind of interesting. Along with that, I did attend a number of workshops. One of the workshops that I attended was called "Go Fish: How to Catch and Keep contributors," which really kind of reiterated in me that I was doing something right, because most of the stuff that she was saying are things that I currently do, trying to help get people to donate things for silent auctions and things of that nature for the school. So I was very proud of myself at that moment. And then there was the Global Leadership Career Opportunities, which was a woman named Eunice from the U.S. State Department coming and speaking to us about opportunities for students in internships and careers through the U.S. State Department and Foreign Service. And that one was something that's really close to me because I'd really like to work for the UN one day, so, of course, that got my attention very quickly. And beyond that, I went to a negotiating skills workshop with a woman named Jennifer Blank, and the description that it gave for her career, we can't really cover because she was actually in the process of switching to another company. She's been sought out by a number of companies over the years to do their negotiating for them because she's such a harsh and stiff negotiator, which, as you may or may not know, is not usually associated with women. Women are usually fairly timid or accept what they're given, so having the opportunity to sit through her negotiating skills workshop really opened my eyes to things that I never really thought of, such as body language whenever you're in your meeting with somebody that you're interviewing with, or, you know, key words, or things not to say first. So I was really impressed with her. And I actually attended both of the events, the National Convention and the NICWhistle Conference. So I'll actually let T talk about the National Convention since I've taken up enough of your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is T, and I'm currently a KCKCC student, and I was honored to go to a National Convention in New Orleans. So first of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees and the College President for giving me a support to go there. And second of all, I want to thank the AAUW Committee to give me a chance to learn, to grow, and to travel. So we went there, even though we didn't have really a nice traveling way to go there, but we did, we did have a great experience in New Orleans. One of the most inspirational events that I still remember until now was the leadership the way Eleanor Roosevelt way. And it gave me a lot of inspirations, motivations, and encouragement, because the speaker, Robin Gerber, she is a historian, and she told us a story about the life of Roosevelt, Mrs. Roosevelt, and I learned a lot from those stories. So one of her most famous words is, "You must do the thing you cannot do." And I will keep it in my, just, you know, in case I want to give up. So those words give me like inspiration not to give up. So again, thank you for your time.
I'll tell you about the train disaster another time. But I also want to acknowledge out of our participation with working with the community and many organizations here on campus that Janice McIntyre was also asked to join the Women's Foundation Research Committee, so I would like to also acknowledge Janice for that.
Wonderful.
Thank you for your time. I just, we love bringing forward our students, we have such wonderful student leaders here, and I just want to point out that, you know, Eva also presented before she went to the conference on the art of the ask, and we had another student who also presented- And we had another student who also presented to students on how to network, and we tied that in with workforce developments right prior to their TEDx event that they had. And so, you know, we have students teaching students as well. So thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, all ladies. We appreciate the report very, very much. Congratulations on your accomplishments. Thank you for representing us so well.
The board asked a couple of meetings ago to have Mr. Wiley Wright from the March West Science Program to come and, and give an update on what's happening in March West Science. So he's here today.
Good afternoon.
My name is Wiley Wright, and I'm the coordinator of the More Troy Science Program at, here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and have been asked to kind of give a kind of a brief synopsis of how the program's going at this particular time. And just kind of give you a brief overview of the program. We're accredited by the American Board of Funeral Service Education, which is based out of St. Joe, Missouri. And of all the More Troy Science Programs in the United States, there's 57 total programs. Of the 57, there's 38 community colleges, there's 11 private schools, and there's eight universities that have programs of More Troy Science. And we currently are the only program in the state of Kansas. The next closest is in St. Louis. There's one in Des Moines, and then there's one in, in Denver, Colorado. Our enrollment here, we currently have 33 students. In the year 2012 of our statistics, we ranked eighth overall of all the community colleges of More Troy Science with a total of enrollment of 33. Out of that, our overall enrollment of the 57 programs in the United States, we ranked Our graduates, we graduated 33. We had two from Iowa, one from Illinois, 18 from Kansas, nine from Missouri, two from Nebraska, and one from South Dakota. And then new enrollees coming up for this year, we have 34 of one from Iowa, 17 from Kansas, nine from Missouri, and eight from Nebraska. And from people that just graduated this semester in the spring and then also summer, we're glad to report that we had 13 graduates in the spring. All of them received jobs before they graduated. We graduated four in the summer, and they too all received jobs. So right now, we're at 100%, placement of our graduates. Some of the other highlights of our program, we had five students obtain the highest score in the nation in chemistry, funeral service merchandising, human anatomy, and funeral service history. Our graduates have to take the National Board Examination prior to graduation, where compared to some institution, where some professions where they have to take it after graduation. Our students are mandated by our American Board that they have to take it prior to graduation. So when the students take the examination, we have a success rate of 85% right now. Of those individuals that pass both the arts and the science on the very first attempt, we reimburse them the $400 that they, was the cost for them to take the National Board Examination. And I'm proud to say that the department awarded over $8,000 in scholarship for students that passed the boards on the first attempt last year. In four years, we have spent over $36,200 in scholarship in reimbursement to students who have passed the boards. And we are the only institution in the United States that provides this service to our graduates. So we're pretty proud of that. Couple of other things. The program has been here since 1974. I haven't been here that long. I may look at, but, but I did some figuring, and in 37 years, we've had over 1,000 graduates that graduated from this institution. In Kansas, we have alumni in 73 counties, and that's out of 105. We have alumni in 90 cities here in the state of Kansas. In Missouri, we have 38 counties covered, 51 cities. And in Nebraska, we have 36, in 36 counties, and also in 45 cities in that state. So again, we feel very, very fortunate. And I just kind of finish up. We always kind of believe that advertising for our program, we're kind of unique. We're, we're the only game in town. And it's always refreshing that when we get people that refer their, people that come in and say, "Where did you go to school?" Or "Where would you recommend of going to school?", that they always recommend us. And we just had two students from Dickinson, North, Dickinson, North Dakota that elected to come down here because they went to a funeral home where one of our graduates over there and recommended to come down to here. So that speaks volume of our graduates that come out of this particular program. So. Any questions?
I want a copy of your report.
Okay, I'll have to type it up. It's kind of busy, bits and pieces.
Wiley, what's your capacity?
Capacity?
How many students can you take?
Oh, I would probably say off the top of, probably 40.
Okay.
And right now, we're right at about 34, 35. I mean, if, if we wanted to go forward, we'd have to hire another instructor. Right now, there's only two of us, so...
So you're pretty much maxed out as far as...
We're getting there.
Yeah.
And how many do you turn away?
We don't turn away anybody.
Okay.
Great.
Yes, go ahead.
What's the, what's the breakdown on the girls versus boys?
Our, I'd have to go back, but I would say pretty much it's about 60% female, 40% male. And that's nationwide, that there's more and more females entering our profession. And I remember, I started back here in 1986, and I think our enrollment was probably 20% female. And each year has just progressively gotten larger and larger.
When you said it was 18, the, the number that you gave us for Kansas, how many of them are wound up counting?
Again, I would have, I would say five.
Okay. Most of the people that sent them to their, are they sending their kids that own the funeral home? Are they going to work for other funeral?
I would say generally, our enrollment of the 35, only 10% come from a family-owned funeral home.
Okay.
That they're going to continue that. So really, not that many.
Okay.
Probably four or five maybe every year. And usually, they come from rural western Kansas, western Nebraska, that they want to continue that business when their family had set out. And in fact, we have one from Larnard, Kansas, that just graduated last December, and their family just celebrated 100 years of being in business in Larnard, Kansas.
Are the requirements for entrance into the program, the grade point?
The requirements, the, the program is an overall GPA of 2.5. And the program's divided into two parts. You have 37 hours of general ed requirements, and those have to be completed with a C or better. Then they can enter the More Troy Science, which again, they have another 37 hours that have to be completed within one calendar year. So it's all full-time.
Wow.
And again, the reason, you know, people always ask, why is it that they have to be done in a year? Well, we're held accountable, just like nursing and other professions, that we have to have our success rate at 60% to take the boards. So we're accountable for our students that take the boards. And we have found the students' success on the boards are very good if they are not part-time and are doing online classes, meaning More Troy Science, that more or less, you get them in, prepare them, and then they take the boards. And we, more or less, on Friday, we have board review every Friday, usually from 11 to 2:00. So I'm about the only one up here at that wing on the flint testing our students, getting ready for to take the boards. So.
Very good.
Well, it was a very comprehensive report, Wiley. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. We appreciate all of your hard work, and congratulations on your success in your department.
Right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You've probably noticed that Dr. Shirley Walker's dressed a little differently today. And there is a special presentation that is coming our way because of her, her special circumstances.
Good afternoon. I am Colonel Retired Mick Allen. I'm the state chair for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. We are a part of the Department of Defense. 95% of the committee are volunteers, and we're spread across the state of Kansas. I did leave early this morning in the fog from Russell to drive here, and the two-day trip was great. It wasn't bad. Diane Boger, she's right here. She's my full-time person here in Kansas City, or in this area. She is a great asset for you guys to use to support Guard, Reserve, and Veterans. But why are we here? I could stand here for an hour and a half and tell you why, how we help Guardsmen, Reserve Rest, and Educate Employers about what these young men and women do in serving in the military. But I have to tell you, last month, we had our annual meeting at Manhattan, and Sergeant Walker attended that with her husband, CW2 Jim Walker, and we presented this award to them there, and she asked that we come here and do it today. And we agreed to that. And I will have to tell you that the person that stole the show was Mackenzie. We asked her to come up with Sergeant Walker and, and onstage with the Agent General, the Agent General and myself and a Colonel from the Reserves, and she took over. But it was great that she was up there with us. So what we'd like to do is show you about an eight- or 10-minute video that will put this in perspective a lot better than I can. Okay?
They formed our original military. They safeguarded our fledgling colonies. And they have served with distinction in every major conflict in America's history. Today, nearly half of our military strength resides in the Guard and Reserve.
Can you get us a little more volume, Michael, please?
As these dedicated men and women serve in battle overseas, or provide humanitarian aid to their fellow citizens in times of need. They depend on the sacrifice and support of their families and their employers here at home. Without this support, the citizen warriors of the Guard and Reserve could not carry out their mission. From local fire departments and police stations, to businesses large and small, whether serving our country or supporting those who do, we all serve. When a member of the Guard or Reserve is called up for active duty, they leave behind a family, a community, and a job. Honoring the bond between service members and their civilian employers is what led to the creation of ESGR, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. A Department of Defense organization, ESGR promotes a culture in which all American employers support and value the military service of their employees. ESGR advocates for initiatives to enhance and encourage that support, informs service members and employers about their responsibilities to each other, mediates issues related to military service as needed, and recognizes supportive employers. ESGR is a network of thousands of volunteers throughout the United States and its territories who understand and value local employment relationships and economic and family conditions. They are always available to assist the men and women of the Guard and Reserve and their
My name is Kelly Cruz. I have a beautiful wife and three wonderful children. I am a Pennsylvania State Trooper assigned to specialized criminal investigation. I'm a lieutenant junior grade in the United States Navy Reserve.
My name's Nicole Palmer. I'm a corporal in the Pennsylvania State Police. Chipper Kelly Cruz is one of my subordinates. He works at the Avondale Barracks. He's probably the best, and I shouldn't, he's not here, so I can say it, he is the best narcotics investigator we have in the unit, probably in the county as well. Now, what dates do you need?
I need April 21st through the 25th.
Our unit is really like a team. We work on our everyday operations as a unit, and we depend on each other. So when someone's deployed, we continue to do that and support him as much as we can and do whatever we can back here to make sure that he's doing okay over in Iraq or wherever he's deployed to.
I'll make sure that I get these in right away. Without the support of my employer, Kelly Cruz, the Reserve member, could not perform the mission. And it's, it's clear to me that the level of patriotism that the Pennsylvania State Police has in support of me as an individual makes it possible for me to do what I do as a United States Navy Reserve officer.
In 1994, Congress passed the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. USARA, as it is known, represents an evolution of legal protections dating back to World War II. USARA establishes the rights and responsibilities of both our Guard and Reserve service members and their civilian employers. ESGR provides training and support to the network of ombudsmen. These local volunteers ensure that employers and service members understand the federal law. ESGR volunteers also provide mediation services.
I am an ombudsman with the ESGR. The opportunity that I have as an ombudsman, I serve as that neutral third party. At the end of the day, I'm able to help resolve a situation and, in many cases, improve a relationship between the service member and the employer. So it's my small way of giving back to help serve our country.
I'm Marion Young. I'm the president of Brightfields Incorporated. We are an environmental consulting company.
My name's Lee De Persia. Lieutenant Colonel, Air National Guard. For Brightfields, I'm a program manager, and I mainly do superfund cleanup work.
When I learned that Lee was going to be leaving for Afghanistan for six, seven, eight months, I felt like I was punched in the stomach. I had no idea how we would, we would manage without him. Meeting a representative from ESGR was such a relief for me. I, I was so glad to find out that the, that the Department of Defense has an organization like this that actually reaches out to business owners to help them understand and help with their employees' deployment.
Duty. Honor. Sacrifice. Every day, all across America. Hospitals, technology and energy companies, first responders. Employers, large and small, are supporting their Guard and Reserve members and thereby serving our nation. The contributions and sacrifices of employers are significant. Recognizing extraordinary support is a key Department of Defense initiative. Through ESGR, DoD honors supportive employers with an array of awards, from the Patriot Award to the prestigious Secretary of Defense Employer Support Freedom Award. The Freedom Award is the U.S. government's highest recognition of employers.
Robison Transport is honored. To be honored for this great award.
It's a real honor for me to be with you tonight and have an opportunity to receive an award for something that I think is really a basic responsibility of every American, and that is to support our military.
The Freedom Award recipients are truly serving our nation, setting the example for all of their employers to follow. all of their employers to follow.
Throughout the past decade, the support provided by our communities and employers to the men and women of our nation's Reserve and National Guard has been remarkable. It's allowed our citizen warriors to leave their homes, perform their duties, and to perform them with distinction, and then return to the civilian life without undue stress. Thank all of you for this achievement. Whether called upon to train foreign police and security forces, to build infrastructure, participate in joint exercises with allies, or provide relief in the wake of hurricanes, floods, oil spills, or forest fires, our citizen warriors stand ready to deploy wherever they are needed. The people of the Guard and Reserve are truly among the nation's best. Our civilian employers have recognized this. They realize that citizen warriors bring a strong work ethic, leadership ability, and important skills to the workplace. So it's no surprise that many of America's employers place a high priority on hiring citizen warriors. Every employer consider doing the same. This is how we should say thanks and how together we all serve.
Wherever you are, an ESGR office and volunteers are nearby and ready to help. To learn more about ESGR and USARA or to become a volunteer, please visit our website at www.ESGR.mil or call our offices at 1-800-336-4590.
Don't everyone jump up and leave to try to go call that number, okay?[706.23][706.23](Laughter). Just something they put on the end of it. How we recognize Kansas employers is very interesting. Service members can nominate their employers for an award that's called My Boss Is A Patriot Award. And I believe you received one of those about a year ago. You received My Boss Is A Patriot, Pam Spencer came and presented it and Sergeant Walker was the nominee. The committee reviews those from the last, from the 1st of October through the fiscal year. And I can tell you, there are about 175 to 200 My Boss Is A Patriot Awards that are done in the state of Kansas by service members, Guard and Reserve, and their spouses can also nominate the employer. The, I have a commit, Awards Committee on, on the ESGR Committee and we sit down and go through these and read every one of them. Of those 175 or 200, we select the top 12, actually the top 15 employers in the state. And Kansas City, Kansas Community College is one of those 15. Reason I say 15 is there are three Pro Patrio Awards that are given, one for a large business, small business, and in the public sector. We presented those at the annual meeting, but then we also presented the Above and Beyond Awards that we're going to present here today. I will tell you that on the Freedom Award, we've had one winner in Kansas and that was Brent in 2004, somewhere in there. We've had several employers nominated. This year, we had Garmin and that's another one that I go through as a State Chair and I can only nominate one from each category. So three from each state go forward or from each committee. And Garmin was nominated and City of Shawnee was nominated. They narrow that down to 15 employers that will receive the Freedom Award next week in Washington DC, which I am privileged to attend. Garmin was not selected in the final 30, but City of Shawnee made the final 30, but did not make the final 15. But we presented them at their council meeting last month with a very nice plaque recognizing it. So with that, that's kind of what we do in a nutshell, a lot of things. This is my last official presentation as a State Chair. After six years, they kick you out. So. Next week, I'm going to Kansas City, Washington DC. They'll bless me and send me on my way. I'll be gone, Sergeant. You can't really wait. If that's empty, please. So anyway, the, like I say, the service member.[911.32][911.32](Laughter). I have 17 days left.[913.32][913.32](Laughter).
Yes, 17.
That's a good idea for safety in numbers. Anyway, it says, in support of the Guard and Reserve, presented as Above and Beyond Awards, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, presented on behalf of the men and women of the National Guard and Reserve Forces for outstanding service and continued support for national defense. Signed, Ronald Young, Detective Director, and Paul Maugh, the National Chair.[941.13][941.13](Applause). Thank you. Tell that to all.[944.13][944.13](Laughter). Thank you all very much and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mick. We're so, so pleased to receive the honor and once again, we consider it a responsibility of every American to, to support our troops and so forth. So certainly support Dr. Walker and all of the others here from Kansas City, Kansas Community College and we thank you for the recognition.
Hopefully next year, someone will be back to Pro Patrio Awards.
Excellent. Thank you very much and have a safe trip home, two days to Russell.[980.82][980.82](Laughter).
Mr. Chair, it is now my pleasure to introduce to you a group of students who are here today in order to fulfill an assignment for their class. I dare say they may not have been here had it not been for the fact that they're completing an assignment. We have, they, these are the doctoral students from the Cohort-Based Community College Leadership Program at National American University. Renee Portman from Johnson County Community College is here. Carrie Norbury from National American, who is now at National American University. She was previously at District 500 and somebody on your board knows her?
Yeah.
And she's a graduate from Summit High School and all that dot business, you know, that some of us will never know and understand.
That's right.[1038.43][1038.43](Laughter).
So she's a part of that. And also from KCKCC, Marissa Gray from our college, Workforce Development Specialist, is a member of that, of that group and they're completing their assignment to go to, to attend a community college board meeting and they chose KCKCC. So we're proud and pleased to have you. Are there comments you'd like to have? Okay.[1064.83][1064.83](Laughter).
Thank you for your warm welcome and inviting us this evening as far as anything that's very special.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We're glad to have you.
All right, now we have the other two.
Yep.
From Academic Affairs. You have two recognitions.
Actually, I have three, but Sherley's going to do two of those from her division of Humanities and Fine Arts. Sherley, you want to take the podium and do your two presentations?
Well, I may have my other hat on, but I'm still short.[1103.01][1103.01](Laughter). It always feels just a little bit awkward to, for me to introduce Darren Elliott to this particular Board of Trustees because between his considerable record as a competitor and his record of professional service to this campus, all of you undoubtedly know quite a bit about him. But in thinking about today's award and my position as his Dean, it may just be that I see a little different side of him than some of the rest of you already know. I know, as his Dean, that regardless of how many times he's gone throughout the year with the debate team, the students in his regular classes still think very, very highly of him and are effusive in their praise about the care he takes of them. I know that because I read his student evals. You should also know that he generously, generously shares his knowledge of community resources with newcomers to the area and mentors adjuncts, not only in his own area but also across the division and across campus, helping them find appropriate committee assignments and so forth. He's, he truly does set a good example in that regard. And you should also know that he generously gives of his personal time throughout the summer, traveling throughout the Midwest to bring the talent that feeds that award-winning team we've all come to know and maybe occasionally take for granted. And not only that, when his travels take him out of state, he generously gives tours of the area and the campus to the students and the parents so that they feel good about leaving their, their children in our charge. And last but not least, you should also know that he has a great sense of humor and an uncanny knack of knowing who needs a smile, who needs a pat on the back, and okay, occasionally, who needs a kick in the head and when to apply which, where, to whom, and when. And so I am most honored to present to you my good colleague Darren Elliott, who recently received from the Kansas Speech Communication Association the 2012-2013 Educator of the Year at the collegiate level.[1270.15][1270.15](Applause).
Well, thank you for the kind words.[1275.15][1275.15](Laughter). One of my civilian friends today. Thank you for the kind words, Dr. Walker, and thank you for the invitation, Dr. Vitale, to come today. I was surprised when I received this award at the convention a couple of weeks ago. I think that there are a lot of people who are certainly worthy of such an award. I consider myself lucky to be a member of this institution. I think that everyone here deserves an award. The people I work with are amazing and the people I work with and the students that I have are truly who make me look good, I suppose, to an outside group because that's how I received this award. And so I think that a large thank you to all of you for everything that you've done, both as colleagues and as mentors. When I came here 12 years ago and I was deciding between Kansas City and Dallas and Portland, I wasn't really sure what the future held and I've got to tell you, 12 years later, I know I made the right decision and I love being here. And as I told some folks after the convention when I received the award, that it truly is about the people that I work with that make something like this possible. I said, I'm not sure if I was the most deserving, but I do suppose it's important that this award go to someone at this college because it's certainly the most deserving college in the state to have a collegiate educator of the year. So just wanted to thank you for that. I will tell you something funny about the presentation. My college coach came back and gave the speech for the award, which was a great honor. I had my daughter with me at the banquet and when I got back to my table, she was laughing hysterically because I'd given a little speech and she, I said, why are you laughing? And she said, do you know what you said in your speech? And despite the fact that I teach public speaking and I try to help people not be tongue-tied when they're giving speeches, apparently I said something in my speech that not only evoked some laughter from her, but everybody. I was telling them in my speech that college debate gave me a lot of my firsts and that when I was in college debate was the first time that I ate good barbecue, which is also why Kansas City makes an important choice to come here and work for 12 years. So the first time that I had Chinese food, I was a college debater. The first time that I flew on an airplane, I was a college debater. And then I said, the first time I saw the ocean, I was a Chinese debater.[1463.21][1463.21](Laughter). And that was the reaction of everyone in the room and I kept going and didn't know I had said this. And when I sat down, my 10-year-old daughter was, like I said, laughing hysterically and so then the next day, we were attending a family function in Topeka and I walked in to a room just in time to hear her telling my nieces and nephews. And then he said he was a Chinese debater and then they all started laughing. So, but I do appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity to come here today. We just had our first tournament of the weekend, this past weekend at UMKC. We did very well. We had a team of two freshmen finish in the top eight out of 120-plus teams. We're the only community college in that division. But what's more important about that part of the story is that these two gentlemen are freshmen, the only two freshman team to do the well, that well at the tournament. They both come from the great state of Nebraska. Mr. Bodie, I'm sure is pleased with that. One of them is a Hispanic male, one of them is a Filipino male, and both of them are in a situation where they weren't getting offers to go to college anywhere and now they're here and they are absolutely in love with the college and are very happy to be here. And the one young man, I talk to his grandfather on the phone about once a week. He calls me to check on him. Denise, I have his permission to tell those things. But he does call and to check on him and to see how things are going and call right after the tournament this weekend to see how things had gone. And so really, it's students like that that make it important, what we do, and it's students like that that keep, I think, all of us that are here going and that's the important part. And so these awards, while they're nice, I always tell my debaters, don't let success make you think the job is done and don't let it distract you from working on the next job and getting the next thing done and getting the next thing accomplished. And so these awards are nice, but I know that we still have a lot of work to do and there's a lot of successes that still be had and I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you.[1590.83][1590.83](Applause). Well deserved. Congratulations, Darren.
Darren, your signs are up and you changed the number.
I just changed.
Okay. And they up on the highway, on I-70 out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you telling me I need to change the number in April?
Yeah.
Again? Okay.[1604.71][1604.71](Laughter).
Fair enough. John Stafford and I have a lot in common. We are both musicians by trade. We both came to Kansas City, Kansas Community College in August of 2010 and we both formerly lived in the great state of Illinois, which has a longstanding tradition of using its ex-governors to hand stamp its license plates.[1622.51][1622.51](Laughter). However, as a choral director, John has amassed a record of credentials for this program in just three years that would do credit to a much more seasoned choral director. He has served as festival conductor for USD 500's Middle School and High School Festivals for the last two consecutive years, going to rack up number three next month. His groups have performed throughout the Midwest in vocal jazz and choral festivals in Creston, Iowa, Wichita, Kansas, and Chicago, Illinois. Last spring, the students sang live on a Kansas Public Radio Station in Lawrence and they've been invited to return this, this next coming year. By the way, singing live on the radio is really scary. There is no white-out.[1680.01][1680.01](Laughter). And just to give some sense of how well he's regarded in the profession, this past summer, John was selected as Jazz and Show Choir Chair for the Kansas Choral Directors' Association, which is the state organization of the American Choral Directors Association. So please give a warm welcome to another great friend and colleague of mine, John Stafford, who's going to tell you about the next great honor coming up for the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Choral Program. John?[1710.61][1710.61](Applause).
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
See if I can fix this mic.[1714.61][1714.61](Laughter). Well, our program, we have two goals for our program, the choral program especially. The first goal is to give the same education to our students that they would get at a four-year college. We do the same level of music that you would get at KU, K-State, and so on, and to give them that same experience, to give them a strong musical experience so where they will want to study music later on, either study music or at least be a patron of music later on if they're not majoring in it. So the, our first goal is to really focus on educating our students, of course. Our second goal, both the instrumental director, Jim Mayer, and myself, we have an interest in establishing a music program on a national level. And so we have, we always apply to festivals- We do the same level of music that you would get at KU, K-State, and so on. And to give them that same experience, to give them a strong musical experience so where they will want to study music later on, either study music or at least be a patron of music later on if they're not majoring in it. So our first goal is to really focus on educating our students, of course. Our second goal, both the instrumental director, Jim Mayer, and myself, we have an interest in establishing the music program on a national level. And so we have, we always apply to festivals and trying to meet colleagues from all over, not only the region, but starting to expand out into other areas. Since I've been here, I've reached out to even as far as Chicago, Texas. I have colleagues now in North Texas, in Northern Colorado, and Western Michigan. Just, I've just gotten to meet all of these colleagues just through this position and advertising our program. And some of these colleagues aren't interested, even though it's a community college, and many of our students go to all the colleges in the area, some of these students are talented enough to go to most colleges in the country. And I have interests from all over of students that want to go to these other colleges. And so those are our two main goals, to establish ourselves nationally and to focus on giving our students a four-year education. Having said all of that, we've been invited, for the second time in three years, we've been invited by the Kansas Music Educators Association to perform at the All-State Convention. They call it the KNBA In-service Workshop. It's in Wichita, and usually the last weekend in February. And it's very difficult to get on this convention. Usually 125 to 150 ensembles. We're talking middle school, high school, and collegiate throughout the state of Kansas apply to perform at this convention. And our jazz ensemble here, our vocal jazz ensemble here, has been invited. If we're in the top 40, they take the top 40 ensembles. And we've been invited to perform the last two out of three years. And so it's a great feat for us, and we just appreciate your support overall. The support we have in terms of scholarships, in terms of professional and development money, in terms of just the budget to go out and do these types of performances and show our students what other schools are like, so they have different ideas of places they can transfer to. It's just very helpful, and we just really appreciate it. Also, in April, our students, the same ensemble that's going to the KNBA Convention, we're also, we've also been invited to perform at the New York City Jazz Festival. And, and so, and we got, we received that invitation at the end of last semester. And so right now, we're working on ways to attend that festival. It'll be the second weekend in April, so we'll actually perform in middle of Manhattan. So thank you very much. Just appreciate your support, and thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Yeah, I think a couple of board members are... Tell them they can raise, tell them they can raise the funds for the trip. They can go. That's how you work that, John.
Okay, Mr. Bodie, you have one.
Okay, thank you. Before I get to Andresia Wilcoxen and her report on the Back to School Fair, I would like to do just one quick introduction, if I could, please. Mark Miller, introduce you to the new bookstore manager, Mark Miller. Came to us from Barnes &amp; Noble and started last week down in the bookstore, so wanted to make an introduction there. And so, Andresia? There she is. Put that back on the first slide, thank you. You asked for a report on the Back to School Fair and the participation and how we did in our cooperation, and that's what we'll get here.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to have a moment here to share the success of the 2013 Wyandotte County Back to School Fair. I actually have some information for you that I'll give to you afterwards, so that way, if you have any questions, you can, you have that information. But I wanted to thank the board, Dr. Givens, Brian, my director Andrea Chastain, for the opportunity to participate again this year in the Back to School Fair, using Kansas City, Kansas Community College as one of our sites this year. This year, we had two sites here on campus as well as Sumner Academy. Dr. Lane was phenomenal in helping us to be able to get Sumner Academy as one of our sites in our northeast corridor here in Wyandotte County. With awesome excitement, I just can't, I'm just excited about this. We had a 101% increase from last year's participation from our community in the Back to School Fair. So our numbers doubled, and one reason is for that, because we added a different location, two locations versus just one location. We found out last year through our data that there was a population, several people, that we weren't serving. And whether that was transportation issues, whatever it was, they weren't getting here. And our students were going to school not prepared or equipped for this, the next school year. And so by adding a different location, two locations, we were able to double our numbers and really help our students and their families to be equipped and ready for school this year. So what we have here is a slide. This is our committee members. The one thing that I believe in wholeheartedly is partnership. We can't do anything alone, and we had a collaboration of many partners across Wyandotte County that came together and said, "You know what? We want to be able to make a difference in our community." And that's a list of who those members are. This is our, these were our objectives for the Back to School Fair. We applied for some grants, foundation grants, and some other larger grants, and we wanted to make sure that this was something that wasn't just a one-time event, but this was something that was going to be sustainable in our community. And based off our numbers, which we'll see later, you'll see why that we say "sustainable." This was how we were going to track our success for the Back to School Fair. And again, we'll get to the numbers. I just wanted you to see that this isn't just an event we host here in Wyandotte County. This is something that many of our organizations and community members believe in, because we want to make sure that our students and their families are ready and set to go for the next school year. Here are some of our financial sponsors and our non-monetary sponsors for the Back to School Fair. Each year, this grows. And this is my second year involved with the Back to School Fair. And what is awesome is just to see the different organizations and companies across Wyandotte County come together to make this so successful. Again, this is a partnership with many people across the area. Here, there's some data here from our KC-KCC participation. We had 92 volunteers, and I just want to say, give a personal thank you to our Sheriff's Department for providing our reserves, the reserves here on campus and at Sumner Academy to make sure our, that both campuses were safe. Our Kansas City, Kansas Community College Campus Police, phenomenal. They were ready to go this year. They knew what to do. It was just so smooth here on campus. It was just great. And then our Kansas City, Kansas Community College Buildings and Grounds Crew, phenomenal crew. I'm telling you, all I did was give them a map. They went with it, and they had it all set and ready to go. So it was absolutely successful. You'll see that in the little squares, going from local entertainment all the way to the haircuts. That was the route that many of our, that all of our community members had to go through. They went through each section, and those were the numbers of people that we served in each of those different areas. And so our local entertainment included our very own Sean Derrick from our advising. He was here. He may have left. He's way in the back. There he is. He's saying, he got to use his talents at the Sumner Academy location, and so we were very thankful that he was able to participate. And then we also had, which are our two students from Wyandotte County that are the National Merit Winners of the Fine Arts Festival, which was held in Orlando, Florida this year. And they were here as well as the Back to School Fair, and they married in rap group. So anyone like rap? Anyone like rap? And so then we had some Latino dancers come out, and that was phenomenal that they were able to come out and do their... I think they actually come out every year to the Back to School Fair. Our library books, our 3,000 books total is what we gave out, and here at this location, that many. Again, our exhibitors, phenomenal. We increased our exhibitors this year versus last year, having two locations. That was going to, a little concern, but we were able to do it, because again, they believe in our students, and they believe in our families, and they're here for our families. Our sports physicals, which was given by KU Medical Center, as well as our Health Department helped participate in that. And our school supplies, there was our number there. Our SAC lunches, which was provided by USD 500. Immunizations, our Health Department, and again, KU, and juntos, which we had some of our students that were here. The juntos was a part of the Back to School Fair. And a local gentleman, he was trying to get a team together to have haircuts. This is our second year, and we're working really hard on this, to provide more haircuts for next year's Back to School Fair. Sumner's location, there is the same thing. That's the number of people that participated. What we, what we found out is that they're equal numbers. There wasn't one location that was higher than the other one. And so that shows us the need, that both locations were very much needed for the Back to School Fair. So I'm going to flip that and move on. This is our grand total, this is, which is so amazing. Out of the 4,695 people that attended, most of those were students, 3,491. I did a data check on this versus our population in Wyandotte County. We were actually, if we include the exhibitors, if we include our campus police and all the different other people here, we actually had about 5,100 people in our community participate in the Wyandotte County Back to School Fair. That's 3% of the Wyandotte County population. I think that's pretty cool. We were on the grid, you know? I think it was just awesome. And with that, those are the, all the totals that we had together in serving our community. So we're actually really excited about this. Zip codes. So we broke it down just a little bit more. Wanted to see what zip codes we were serving. Who were we missing? Look at that increase. It was just amazing. The 66104 zip code went up from 188 from last year's total to 799 participants. That's, that's really close to here. Our 66112, our very own zip code here at the community college, 445. Amazing. There is a huge need. We know that there, through this data, there is one area that we are not serving, and we are going to be working very hard to serve that community at our next year's Back to School Fair. But this, again, this wasn't a one-person, a two-person thing. This was a team that created this success. And I'm just, it was an honor to be able to participate with that team. All right, as we go through, these are some of just some pictures of just how, of a quick virtual tour of the Back to School Fair. We started out at the front of the building. The line, as you see, was very long here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. We move into our entertainers, again, our National Fine Art Merit Winners right there. The rappers, the Latino dancers, Workforce Partnership, always here, helping our families to be able to get placed in some kind of workplace skills and different things that they offer. We move into our registration area where this line, and these people are ready to get in and move. Mr. Rios was here as well at the Back to School Fair, and thank you for being here and representing the board. He saw it for himself on how awesome it was with the population, the people that we served here. We went to our exhibitors upstairs here in this, this area, and downstairs in the lower jewel was full of exhibitors with tons of people. And what was even most phenomenal about this year's Back to School Fair is that most of our, instead of rushing through the line, our parents and students who actually had time to sit and talk to the various exhibitors that was there. We had, Central was there. We had immigration attorneys there. We had the Wyandotte County Football and Cheer League there. We just had a variety of services there, and what was phenomenal is they actually had time to talk with them. They didn't rush. Last year, they rushed. They wanted to get in and out. This year, there wasn't that, and that was, that, to me, spoke volumes, because that's the sustainable part of this Back to School Fair. These families can get the help through the entire year, entire year, instead of just the one-time backpack, school supplies. Now they can have the other different types of services that will help them throughout the year. Then we move into our backpacks downstairs in the deli area. Students receiving backpacks with their families. And in our, we had our physicals. We had our immunizations, again, by KU Medical Center, the Health Department, and juntos. And moving outside, we had our SAC lunches, which are, the Masonic Lodge actually cooked for us, and that was pretty cool. They could do it every year, every year. And they provide nutritious meal for all of our families that attend. And then last, but not least, our haircuts here. They went to the PAC and had the haircuts, and so that was pretty cool. This is a new service that we're offering, that we offered this year, and hopefully, we're going to continue to grow this service. And what, and this is just an awesome picture of all the volunteers. We work our volunteers really hard. The gentleman in the middle is one of our KC-KCC basketball players. He was giving his time for community service, and so we wore him out. He's sitting there. The gentleman to the very bottom of the right, or your left, whichever one, his eyes are, his clothes, do you see his eyes closed? He was taking just a short nap because, you know, he was, he was tired. So what I'd like to do now is introduce to you a family that came to the Back to School Fair in a very different, they served in very different capacities. They not only came in to receive backpacks, but they also got immunizations. And they also served as volunteers for our Back to School Fair. So I'm going to introduce to you Carissa and Shane, and let them just tell you real quickly what the Back to School Fair meant to them.
How are y'all doing today?
Good.
We were just asked to come and take a couple of minutes to express with you guys the gratitude we have on behalf of us, and I'm sure the rest of Kansas City that you guys helped. The line, as you seen, was crazy. I'm kind of glad we were volunteering. It got us out of waiting in that line, gave us something more productive to do while we were waiting. I just, for us, it's, we have a family of four, and most of you guys probably have kids. School supplies, especially today, are not cheap. So for four kids, it's being able to get that help and stuff from you guys and these different organizations and groups allows us to be able to get, you know, school clothes and shoes and stuff like that that might have been a little bit of a pressure on the budget, you know, if we didn't have this extra help. So I just can't express enough the gratitude on behalf of us, and like I said, I'm sure the rest of Kansas City that you guys helped for the immense help that you guys give every year. Thank you.
And then now I would like to introduce Nancy McNeely. She is actually with Workforce Partnership. She was on our committee, and she was an exhibitor. So Nancy, would you come and share just a little bit?
I'll fix this. So that was a surprise. The Back to School Fair was awesome. I've been a part of it for probably the last four or five years, but these last two years have been better. How do they say it? Gooder and gooder? They've been gooder and gooder. One of the things that I found, I've worked the Back to School Fair when it was in one location. It was crowded. It was packed. It was hot. It took a long time. You couldn't breathe. It was, it was really stressful. But this time, with the two different locations, it was nice. The people could actually talk about not just back to school, the back to school supplies, but resources, resources that will help them throughout the year. So it was an awesome opportunity for, for me as an exhibitor. I was able to share some of our resources and help with what we needed, but network with other individuals in the community. So that was just great. One of the things that I really thought was exciting was, this year was the first time that I participated in some of the trying to get funds and trying to get funding for the Back to School Fair. And we volunteered at Culvers, and we did, I had my daughter working. And it was, it was a good opportunity, because you let the youth see what it is to work. And, you know, having the youth to work and to volunteer, and, you know, they were excited to wear the yellow jackets because they felt important. And it's important to let our youth know that they are our today. They're not our future, but they're today. They're right now. So I was excited to be a part of this, and I hope we can continue to do this. And I thank you all for your support in everything that you do. Thank you so much.
And with that, we had, what we do with our students here on campus is we incorporate them in the community service part of this. So they're, they're just not receiving the backpacks, but they're actually working. They're working in the ahead of scenes kind of thing during it and even afterwards. So I would like to thank some of our volunteers, like Dr. Marvin Hunt. He was one of our volunteers. Tracy Henning was another one from the bookstore. Marissa Gray, she always does phenomenal jobs and just provides different things for the Back to School Fair. And our Endowment Association, they helped, they were our fiscal agents this year, and they, they put up with a lot from us this year with this, "How much money do you have? How much money do, you know, can we spend this?" And so, so they did phenomenal work with that, and many others that participated in, here at KC-KCC and at Sumner Academy. This year, we were excited because we were able to raise a little over $56,000. We started out with about $6,000, I think, right around $6,000 from last year. And then just, and we had two locations. It made us nervous. We weren't sure if we were going to provide, be able to provide all of the services that we normally do with the one location. So we were able to do that. So thank you again. This is a phenomenal opportunity for our community college. It gets the students across the Wyandotte County area into the college to be able to see what a college is about, the questions, the getting the library books, pushing the, you know, promoting post-secondary education, not just with the students, but with their parents. We had our own students from addiction counseling here with a table. It's just amazing that they, these students are giving back, but that they're giving back so that other students can come and re- back so that other students can come and receive, and then at that point give back as well. So I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Phenomenal success story, and thank you very much for the comprehensive report. Thank you all for being here to share with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We, I understand it was a long report this time, but we had a lot to tell. So thank you so much for listening to all of us.
All good. All good stuff.
All good.
All good stuff.
I do have a couple of more. I forgot about these, just announcements of events. Constitution Day is Wednesday, September the 18th, and that's a federal requirement for our college, and that's from 9:00 to 12:00. It'll be here on campus, probably in upper jewel. September the 30th is a special Board of Trustees meeting, and that will be at 4:00 PM at McAnany and Van Cleve, McAnany, Van Cleve and Phillips. Wednesday, October the 7th, we, a group of us will be going to the AACT meeting in Seattle, and we will present our strategic plan development process in one of the breakout sessions. So we're really excited about that. We, President Ash and I attended the KACT COP statewide meeting at Cali Community College, and we worked on our legislative agenda and we did some planning. It was one of our better meetings, so we're excited about that. Maybe Trustee Ash will tell more about that. And our next meeting will be in September, in December, and that's all I have. I am done.
Okay. Pretty good. Any questions, comments on the President's report?
You gonna tell me what happened when we get to yours?
No. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Givens. Thank you. All right. Agenda item number eight is under miscellaneous. We need a motion to enter into executive session. Mr. Nguyen, could you suggest how much time we may need?
15 minutes.
For both bullets?
For both, yes. Total 15 minutes, one fine.
Yeah, we're moving on to executive session for 15 minutes. For these reasons, so stated on the agenda? Okay. Now, motion in a second, enter into executive session. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will adjourn to another room, and we'll be back shortly with action to follow. Okay, we are back into general session. We are at agenda item number nine, personnel. And Dean Marks hasn't caught up with us yet, so we'll give her a, give her a moment or two to get caught up with this.
I'll just step in for a moment. Leota would ask for your approval of item 9A for information, provide that information to you, and then ask for your approval under item 9B, recommendations, 1 through 35 with the amended change on number 34 on the change of the date.
Move approval with the amendment.
Second. Okay, but motion in a second. Is there any question or comment?
None. All right. All the questions.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, we're ready for agenda item number 10, Vice President for Academic Affairs report, Dr. Batali.
Yes. We did the recognition for Darren Elliott, so now I'd like to introduce Dr. Sonki Min and Karen Fife to do a presentation on our SESI report, which the board asked for at the last meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone again. I am here to do a brief overview of some of the results from the most recent SESI, which is the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, and I appreciate the opportunity for me to present these results. The 2013 national cohort consisted of over 450,000 students from 718 community colleges. Kansas City, Kansas Community College was one of 185 medium-sized colleges, and they define medium-sized colleges as those community colleges with enrollments between 4,500 and 7,999, and not one student more. Here at KCKCC, they, our surveys are administered to randomly selected classes, and what we do is we send a list of all of our courses that meet certain criteria to SESI, and those criteria have to do with minimum, minimum number of students enrolled in the class, no independent study courses, no clinicals. So we take all of those classes out, and then SESI randomly selects from those classes, and we get a list back, and then invite those instructors from those courses to participate in the SESI.
Karen, does that include the tech classes?
Yes. In spring 2013, 526 student respondents, which represents a response rate of 63%, and we're pretty happy with that response rate. The primary purpose of the SESI is to ask our students about their college experiences overall and determine their degree of engagement. And the degree of, of student engagement is the amount of time and energy students invest in meaningful educational activities. And the survey asks students about a variety of their experience here on campus, how they spend their time, what they feel they have gained from their classes, their relationships with their instructors, their counselors, their peers, what kind of work challenges them, those sorts of things, and also how the college is doing in regards to support for their learning. In this presentation, we're gonna talk about the five categories of student engagement, and also briefly touch upon some of the special focus areas that SESI looked at this year called Promising Practices. The benchmarks, as you can see on, on the slide, there are five of them, active and collaborative learning, student effort, academic challenge, student-faculty interaction, and support for learners. And for these, these are called their benchmarks, and benchmark scores are conceptually related survey items that address key areas of student success. Every participating college has a benchmark score. The cohort benchmark scores are standardized to have a mean of 50, and we can get an idea of how well we're doing based on that score of 50, if we're above the cohort mean or below the cohort, cohort mean, so it kinds of gives, gives us a gauge of where we're at. The Promising Practices are the special focus items. It's a part of a national research project for which there is emerging evidence of strengthening student, student learning persistence and attainment. And before I present some of the results, I'd just like to say that since the last SESI was administered in spring 2011, there have been a lot of things going on at Kansas City, Kansas Community College in terms of improving what we do. You know, not the least of which is all of the efforts that have gone into the strategic plan. So with that, I want to present some of the results for the benchmarks and the Promising Practices. And in these next series of slides, there's a lot of numbers on there, so I tried to create sort of a, a scheme to make it a little easier to interpret. Excuse me. So if it's regular black font, our mean scores have not changed or they're lower than the cohort. If they're bold black, they're lower but above the cohort. Bold green means we're higher from 2011, and we're also above the cohort. Bold red is that we're higher, we've increased from 2011, but we're still below the cohort. So what we want to see on these next slides is a lot of green and red. So the first benchmark is active and collaborative learning, and there are seven survey items which compose this benchmark. And these survey items are, are responses to the question, how often have you done each of the following at this college during the school year? And as you can see on the first table, there lists the seven survey items, and you can see the scale up at the top. It's a one-to-four scale, one means never, four is very often. This chart also shows the mean score for Kansas City, Kansas Community College in 2011, which was the last time we administered it, and this most recent survey administration, which is 2013, and then also for the cohort. And as you can see, the KCKCC mean score has remained above the cohort score on the item, the very first item there, asked questions and participated in discussions in class. We have a mean score of 3.02, and even though we're a little less than 2011, we're still above the cohort. In addition, Kansas City, Kansas Community College means increased on three of the items, which you can see are in bold red there over 2011. And we also showed an increase on our index score or benchmark score there at the bottom. In 2011, it was 46.3, and now we're up to 47.3. The next, next benchmark is student effort, and there are five survey items which compose this benchmark. And the question students answered is how much effort have you put into each of the following at this college during the school year? Again, we have a one-to-four scale, one meaning never, four meaning very often. And on this benchmark, KCKCC means increased and are equal to or above the cohort means, which are the green highlights on three survey items. And so those, you can see the three survey items there. So we are, we increased, and we're also above the cohort on those items. We also noticed an increase in the benchmark score over 2011, 46.4. We increased to 49.2, so we like to see that as well. The next benchmark is academic challenge. It has 10 survey items, and it asks them to, ask respondents to answer the question, how much has your coursework at this college emphasized the following mental activities during the school year? And here are the first six survey items. Again, we have that same one-to-four scale, one meaning never, four meaning very often. And as you can see, we have increased on three of the survey items over last year, which is the, the red, the bold red. They're still a little bit below the cohort mean, however. And then on the remaining items which compose this benchmark, there's four. You can see that the scales are different for each of the items, and the scale is listed right above the survey item there. But you can see, we see green and red on this slide, which is good news. So we are, we've increased and above the cohort on three of those items, and we've increased on one of those items, which is the bold red, and we've also increased the benchmark or index score over 2011. Student-faculty interaction, it has six survey items, and it asks the question, how often have you done each of the following at this college during the school year? Again, we go back to the one-to-four scale, one meaning never, four meaning very often. And as you can see here, we've got green and red going on in that middle column. So we have, we've increased on each of those items, and we've also increased on the index score or benchmark score. So if my counting is correct, we have increased on all four of the benchmark scores so far. Should we see if we're going for five for five?
Yes, we should.
The next one is support for learners, and it asks, it has five survey items which compose this benchmark, and it asks, how much does this college emphasize each of the following? And here we go. We are five for five. So we, we are five for five on the increased benchmark scores. This benchmark reflected the largest increase among all of the benchmarks. We went from 48.5 to 52.1, which is not only an increase, but it's also above the cohort mean. So we went five for five on increasing our benchmark scores, and we're also above the cohort means on four of the items, and we also increased over last year on one item.
Is this part of our intrusiveness?
Intrusive counseling.
I hope so.
You know, I was booked by that, but now that I see the result, I guess it's all good.
It's all semantics in a day.
Well, obviously, something's happening. Something good happening there.
Denise will be happy to know that you remembered that intrusive counseling.
Oh, I will never forget that.
Moving on to the Promising Practices, again, these are special focus items that are part of a national research project. They primarily focus on the student's first-year experience or first semester student and, student experience. And I'd like to point out that some of the language used in the SESI survey doesn't necessarily parallel with the language that we use here at KCKCC, so keep that in mind and, and keep that in context when you see some of the results. And also, one difference in the next few slides, we're comparing Kansas City, Kansas Community College to other medium community colleges instead of the entire national cohort. So the first question of the Promising Practices asks students if they completed registering for all of their courses before the first class session. And as you can see, over 90% of our students indicated that, yes, they had registered for all of their courses prior to the first class sessions. Part of this could be, I know Enrollment Management Division had their whole Enroll Now campaign, and, and, you know, we've done some things to get students to enroll earlier and, and try not to delay their enrollment and to really get on the ball and get in there. So it's similar to other medium community colleges, we're just a little tick higher than the other medium community colleges. The next Promising Practice, excuse me, asks students to indicate the one response that best describes their experience with orientation when they first came to this college. As this chart shows, more KCKCC students indicated their orientation included an orientation cord, it's, it's the bars in the middle, while more medium college students reported attending an on-campus orientation. In addition, more Kansas City, Kansas Community College students indicated they were not aware of an orientation opportunity. However, there have been some ways I've, that we are restructuring or redoing orientations just recently, so I'm hopeful that we will see some changes with the next SESI administration comes along. The next one, and this is sort of where our language here on campus may differ from the language used in SESI. The next question says, during my first term at this college, I participated in a structured experience for new students, sometimes called a freshman seminar or first-year experience. And, you know, sometimes we don't always use those, that language here on campus. But as you can see, we have, 30% of our students indicated, yes, they did participate in something of that nature, their, their first, as, as a first-time experience, and that's about 10% over medium community colleges. And then also, medium community, more medium community college students indicated they did not participate in one of those types of experience, a little over 70% compared to our students at 60%. The next one is, during my first term at this college, I enrolled in a student success course, such as student develop, development, extended orientation, et cetera. We refer to that course, I think, most commonly on this campus as our H U D V courses. So again, there's a language where the language isn't necessarily parallel. Just over 20% of our students indicated they participated in this type of course their first term here, which is a little more than medium community colleges. But we also have almost 70% But we also have almost 70% saying that they did not participate in a structured course experience like that during their first term, which is lower than medium community colleges. The next slide, and you might remember this from last year, is, this is not a part of the promising practices, but we wanted to show you, sort of give you an update on where we were in terms of our student services. The gold line on this chart indicates how important our students think each of these services are. The dark red line indicates their satisfaction, and the blue line indicates their usage. The items are also listed in order of most important to least important. The top five areas did not change from 2011 to 2013 in terms of order of importance. And also, the red stars indicate where we have increased from 2011 on those items. And this is kind of a look at student services from the 30,000 feet level. And I would like to mention that the enrollment management division is working with our team and the CRCD, and also the IT, BaaS's team in IT, to implement and administer a much more detailed student satisfaction survey. We're working on that. We're hoping to launch in November. So hopefully, that'll give us a more detailed view of student satisfaction in those areas. So just in summary, benchmark scores have improved in all five areas. So we went five for five, especially support for learners, which was up 3.6. Our means are at or above the cohort means on 12 of the 33 survey items which composed the benchmark scores. And internally, KC KCC means increased from 2011 to 2013 on 24 of the 33 items. So that's about 72%. Yay. And then the big smiley face is all of the survey items mean increased on the student faculty interaction and support for learners benchmarks. With the promising practices, 90% of respondents indicate that they registered for all their courses before the first class session, which is a good thing. More students reported experiencing orientation course when they first came to KC KCC than students from other medium community colleges. And about 10% more of our students participated in a structured experience for new students compared to students from medium community colleges. The top five, as I mentioned, the top five student services areas important did not change from 2011 to 2013, and they are academic advising, financial aid advising, computer lab, career counseling, and skill labs. And satisfaction means increased from 2011 on seven of the 11 services on the survey. So with that, any questions?
Is orientation, is it during the evening as well as in the morning?
I am not sure of.
A lot of them were given in daytime. There was, there was an evening one earlier in the summer.
It was a, okay. And how many students did we have in 2011 that filled that out compared to 2013?
The response rate was, I believe we had, I can't remember off the top of my head, the response rate in 2013 was just slightly lower, was 63%. In 2011, the response rate, I believe, was 67%. But I can't remember the exact number of respondents.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Is, is, is the cohort strictly based on the size of the college? Not on demographic?
It's strictly, the national cohort is all of the students who took the survey nationwide. And then they break it down so you can compare yourself to other medium community colleges. So it's just enrollment. And they do, sometimes you can get specialized reports where they try and classify. I've got a list of all the other medium community colleges. They, it's really, when you get down to some of those other criteria, it gets really difficult to come up with a usable cohort because there are so many differences, urban, suburban, rural. So it's really kind of a top level way that they do their cohorts. But it's also a great way to compare and see how we're stacking up against other similar institutions based on enrollment.
Well, all things considered, very positive report, I think. And congratulations to the deans and to the faculty members for, you know, pushing that engagement out with the students and so forth. And I think, obviously, the students believe it's taking hold. So that's how we get the success.
Now, let's keep it there.
Congratulations. Thank you for a thorough report. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the report. I was impressed by our strategic plan of addressing so many of these issues. So I would think, I mean, we're, this is really a good report, but we'd like to see everything above the cohort. And I think our strategic plan puts us in place to do that because it directly addressing almost everything they're measuring here. So really look forward to 2014, the next one coming around. Thank you very much.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much. Salkey, thank you.
Go into my report then. The one thing I did want to say is Dr. Mario Ramos Reyes couldn't be here tonight, or we would have recognized him earlier, but he was recognized by the Catholic University of Paraguay for his 10 years of participation as, on the Paraguay delegation of the Yale Law School, SARAH program. And Dr. Ramos Reyes, who teaches philosophy in the Division of Social and Behavioral Sciences, was the first council general of the Republic of Paraguay to the state of Kansas, and now serves as the general, council general emeritus to the state of Kansas. So just another recognition for some of our many faculty that we have here. And if there are any questions about my report that you'd like to ask, be happy to answer them.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Vitale?
When I did leave you brochures for ESOL and our developmental ad at your places before that, so you can look at those time permitting.
I'm of approval of Dr. Vitale's report.
Okay, we have motion in a second to approve Dr. Vitale's report. Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Mike. And now we will move to item 11 and hear from our vice president for student and administrative services, Mr. Brian Bodie.
Okay, thank you. My report is attached for this month. Looks like they don't have the college's app up on the hardline computers, just only on their telephones. I would answer any questions on the report. Had a question about orientation, a specific question about our report from, from the advising center on orientation. We had two days of orientation in July, had 55 students show up in those two days. We would like to say we had 100 registered, 55 showed up. The second thing that we're, we're looking at, we're looking at a definition of what that target population needs to be. And we understand it probably should be a first time, full-time student, who's a traditional coming out of high school student. But then we're looking to see what other students needed to be, need to be included in that as we try to pinpoint our notification to those students to be, to participate, and how we hold them to the fire to participate in the orientation process. So I wanted to give you that, and I try to answer any of the questions on my report if you have any.
Any questions for Brian and his report?
Vote of approval, Vice President Bodie's report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Vice President Bodie's report. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Baz Applelanin. Going to talk to you about our new mobile app. Doesn't work on BlackBerrys.
Good afternoon.
It truly is exciting to be here and share with you one of our, can you hear me okay? Hello? And share with you one of our latest technology marvels on campus, and that is the KC KCC Go. Before I start, I want to give you a brief overview about what we are going to be talking about. It is not going to be as long as the previous presentations, basically five minutes deal. I will give you an introduction about how this all project started, some of the features, demo, and then I would like to recognize the team who really wanted to be here this evening or this afternoon, but had gotten a little later. So they, they have families to go to and other projects that they're working on, so they decided to leave. And I couldn't give a presentation without using a quote. So I, I'm going to take you back to 1943, when Thomas Watson, who was the IBM's chairman, said back then, I think that the world market, I think there is a world market for about five computers. Obviously, he was wrong. Since then, each one of us is actually walking around with a computer in their pocket. And that has changed the way we access data, the way we look at data. We want it really quick, we want it real time. And IT professionals throughout the years started to look at ways to make that happen, to provide users with the data that they want, at the time that they want, on the media that they want. So we have been collecting data over the past three years about how our students, faculty, and staff been accessing our website, for example, as well as the portal. And we found that between 2011 and 2013, them accessing our kckcc.edu has risen from 12,094 visits on a mobile device like the iPhone to 170,000. And year 2013 has not come to a close yet. They also have been using it on the iPad and other devices like the Android, and Brian BlackBerry was not there, didn't make it. So with the implementation of the enterprise, with the implementation of the Enterprise Resource Planning System that we implemented here, starting 2007, DataTel, they provided us with a medium that we can build a native app that would allow our students to access certain features. So we assembled a team together that went through the typical life cycle to develop an app for KC KCC students that would allow them to access the information that they need. So we went into the planning, we started meeting weekly, looking at the requirements. What is it exactly that our students would like to have access to on regular basis from the comfort of their palm? They don't want to sit in front of a computer to look at their schedule, for example. I don't want to go and, and log into my computer to print a schedule or carry it on, on paper with me. I'd like to be able to see that on my phone. So we collected the requirements, we did some analysis, and we started the implementation process. And it was a collaborative effort between several departments within information services as well as other offices on campus. And then we came to the testing part, where we invited students, faculty, and staff to test it. We released it to them on a beta phase. They downloaded it on their iPads, their iPhones, their Android devices, and also Android tablets. And they started using it and provided feedback that we were able to incorporate some of it. And then we deployed it. Throughout the process, we recognized that class schedule is one of the features that they would like to have access to it on a regular basis, their grades at the end of the semester. They would like to be able to look at campus news. They want to know what's going on on campus. And they would like also to see campus maps. A lot of students, particularly new students, don't really know the namings that we have for the buildings that we have at KC KCC. They get lost easily between buildings. So we were able to incorporate that and also driving directions between locations, such as if you want to go from main campus to Leavenworth Center, or from, from main campus to TEC one, you will be able to do that with this app. And we also found that there are some numbers that our students, faculty, and staff access on regular basis, and they would like to have easy, convenient access to these numbers from their phones, like campus police, for example, the college nurse, as well as other services on campus. And social media has been a big hit lately. A lot of people ask about KC KCC and its presence on social media. So we wanted to incorporate within our app, easy access to our social media channels like Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, and the YouTube channel, which I'm sure that you all know that these board meetings are broadcasted on our YouTube channel. And more to come. We have been working on adding more and more features, and more will come in the future. So it was launched in September 4th, 2013. That was almost 12 days ago. And so far, we have 458 users who have downloaded and used the app. And I would like to take five more minutes to show you how the app works.
It's cold in here. It is. I didn't bring my phone or I fixed the temperature box.
So when a student download the app, this is the first screen that they will be presented on. When you click the top left button on the screen, that will reveal the menu of the items that you have, one of which is my classes. So if I am taking classes at KC KCC, I click on this option and navigate between the days, and it will show me the classes that I am enrolled in. So it looks like I am enrolled in a psychology class, social science, building room 3202, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And I can continue to do that, so it will show me all the classes that I'm enrolled in. At the end of the semester, when the grades are posted, I will be able to actually see my grades as well here. Notifications. If I borrowed a book from the library, for example, or if I have a financial aid or administration would like to get ahold of me, I will see a message here on the notification screen telling me that I have a book that needs to be returned to the library, or if I have a financial aid, then I need to go and pay my bills. And news. I don't think that you can go wrong about communication and disseminating the word about what's going on at KC KCC. So with this, you will be able to see that today we have the Keith Award and KC KCC to host flu shots, and you can go back for a month. Actually, if you go back to the August 12th, there is the news about the KC KCC opening of the Dr. Thomas Burke Technical Education Center, along with a picture in there. This is a brief description of the story. If you would like to read the entire story, you click on the button down at the left, right corner of the screen, and you select open in Safari, and that will take you to the entire article that you can read it all there.
Baz, where does that information, where does the news come from and who updates that for you? Who's going to be responsible for that?
Well, currently, we, the primary source of information is coming from the news that are being sent to the local news outlets. We get it internally here.
What Jim Beechwood sends out?
I'm sorry?
What Jim Beechwood sends out, basically?
Right, correct. What Jim Beechwood, and I believe it goes to you, and it goes to news outlets, and we get a copy of it, and we post it here as well.
Alan Hoskins, too.
And Alan Hoskins.
So that's basically going to be everything that we've been getting through email notifications that'll show up on that.
Yes, yes.
How about if a student group wanted to put something on there? How about if a student group wanted to put something on there about an event they had coming up?
They can post it, they can send it to us and we can post it there. We are in the process of trying to implement or incorporate a content management system that will allow certain people with certain rights to be able to post news in here. But, we don't want it to be crowded, this is after all, a mobile app, it needs to be light. One of the things that you could do by clicking on the filter is to select different categories. So, if I want to only see athletics news, I select athletics, and it will show me only the athletics news, and we can add more filters in here. So, currently, it is all set on general, and that's why it's showing all the news available. Campus map, this is one of the really nice features that I really like. When you click on campus button, you have the three major campuses that we have, main campus, Leavenworth Center, and Technical Education Center. So, I'm going to select main campus, and I will zoom in from the sky to some of the buildings that we have, and we have all these red pins on top of the building, so I don't really know what these buildings are until I touch one of these pins, and it tells me what it is, PAC building. But it doesn't stop at that, when you touch the blue button, it will zoom in, and it will tell you about the services that are available in that building, and a picture, an external picture of that building. You can do the same thing with other buildings as well. Additional services, campus police, English as a Second Language Offices, and all that is showing according to the building that you click on.
When you click Get Directions?
You cannot get internal directions within the campus, but you can get it from one campus to another.
Okay.
So, if I want to go, for example, to, my location is showing this blue dot here is where I'm standing right now.
Yeah.
So, if I want to go to Leavenworth Center, for example, I will select campus, and then Leavenworth Center. Oh, I'm sorry. How did I?
That's it.
Center, Select Directions.
Yep.
And then, Get Directions, and that will open the built-in GPS into your phone, and it gives you three different routes that you can take from here, main campus, to Leavenworth Center, and the traffic information is actually incorporated in here. If you pay attention to the three numbers, you have a route that would take 38 minutes, another would take 42 minutes, and a third would take 41 minutes.
Baz?
Yes, sir.
Can you use that to go to directions somewhere besides a college site, so if I want to go to Unified Government, UG, or somewhere like that?
Yeah, what this does is it uses the built-in map application within the iPhone, and any smartphone now has that feature, so you can use it to go to different locations.
Would you have to go to this site to get to that, or could you just use this site to go right there?
I'm sure, I'm...
I think you'd have to get out of it.
You'd have to get out of this slide.
You can't type in Unified Government of YN count.
Well, no, actually, you can, because I am not in the app itself, the screen that you're looking at right now is not part of the app.
You've gone into Google or something.
I went into the map application that's built into the iPhone.
Oh, okay.
So, I can go clear here, and I can type here, I want to go to Unified Government, and all of these are built, or locations that I have been to.
Okay.
So, it doesn't matter where, which location you want to go to, it just takes where you stand, and it draws the direction to the destination. Important numbers, these are the numbers for services, some of the services that we have here on campus. When you click on campus police, for example, it shows you the phone number, by touching that, it will actually dial, and it's dialing here on my phone, but it's not showing on the screen, and one of the police officers will respond. Technical support, library, formation center, human resources, president's office, and that's, Peggy is your number. We also thought about this as a communication and education tool for our users, and as we continue to roll out new technology solutions on campus, we want to educate our users about that by posting some user guides, how to do certain things on the system, how to connect to the wireless, for example, or how to configure your phone to receive KC KCC email on it. So, when you click on user guides, currently, we have two guides in there, one is KC KCC email on the iPhone, and one, the other one is KC KCC email on Android. When you touch the iPhone, it gives you the option, if you are a student, you click on Students, and it gives you different instructions for setting your email on iPhone. The last section that I wanted to highlight is the social media. When you touch Facebook, it will take you directly to the Facebook channel, where you will see that we have 2,034 likes, and some of the postings that we have on Facebook, and some of the comments that our users have posted on our wall. Same thing with Twitter, and how many followers we have, and the pictures and events that happened. As a matter of fact, the first one is an announcement of this board meeting that's taking place, the location, time. And finally, the LinkedIn is the same, finally, the YouTube is the YouTube channel, where you can actually view these videos on your phone or your tablet device. We have looked at other schools that have apps, and I don't want to sound biased, but this is by far one of the best mobile apps that you can see in a community college. And I'm really proud of the work that had been done in it, and I would like to recognize the team that worked really hard over the past six months to get this to the light, and these are their names. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I have a question, I understand Apple's coming out with a new iOS in a few days, how will this impact this, will it, what will be the enhancements for this?
I knew you were going to ask that. As a matter of fact, I think it's working great on it, because the iOS that's running on this phone is iOS 7. So, it is working great, as you have seen it, and I think it's going to be wonderful when it comes out.
Is that available now?
No, not yet. Yes, because of the developer network.
So, you're one of the beta testers?
Yeah.
So, Baz, if we do an app search for KC KCC Go, we'll find it, we can download it?
Well, actually, this is part of the ERP solution that we purchased through Illusion, so you type Illusion Go. But we have posted links across campus where students can type it, or if you have a barcode scanner on your phone, you can go to one of these posters and scan the barcode, and it will take you directly to the download page for that. And it works on Android phones, it works on iOS devices like iPhones and iPads.
Excellent.
Thanks Baz.
Thanks Baz.
Team worked hard on this, and we're really proud of what IT put out here, and the students who do have it are really excited about having all of that in their hands. Really nice. And that concludes my report under number 11.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we better keep moving, or else Peggy's going to have to order breakfast. Agenda item 12, Finance.
I asked for your approval of the payment of the bills as presented in your packet.
Finance Committee so recommends.
All right, it's been motioned in second, and that we accept the, or we pay the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, and I request your approval of the financial reports under 12, BEs presented.
I will just make a quick note, electrical usage was low for the month and the five years that are outlined there. However, our cost was the second highest, so we just can't, yeah. So, thank goodness we're conserving, because if we were using the same amount of energy, I don't know how we would be paying for it. That could be an interesting thing. Other than that, the rest of the financial house is in order, much of specific questions. Move approval of the financial report.
All right, we have motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, JD.
Under recommendations, the Finance Committee is, and I should have, there's been some talk about this, and I don't know, I'm sleeping at the wheel. The Finance Committee wants to table item number 11, so that the bidding process can commence on that.
I move approval of the recommendation, accepting what JD just said, tabling number 12, or number 11 for bid.
Second, okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any comment or question about it? Everybody clear on what we're doing?
Yep.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries, and item 11 is tabled until we get complete bidding process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian, and Finance Committee, thank you. Item 13, Report from Committees. Kathy, I guess we can start with you, do you have anything for us? No? Okay. Yes, we did. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, Don, the Policy Committee's met a couple of times, we thought we might have something for this meeting, but there's been a couple additions we need to look at, and the College Senator's still going to meet with Dean Marks to discuss the recommendations, so we're pretty confident we'll have something for our first meeting in October, but no guarantees at this point, so, but we're pretty close, aren't we?
We're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, we're moving in the right direction.
All right, work's going on, okay, good, thank you, Ray. As far as KACCT report goes, Dr. Gibbons had mentioned that she and I attended the quarterly meeting which was held at Cali County Community College in Arkansas City, Kansas, and we traveled in first class in Dr. Gibbons' new automobile, and I had the opportunity in three days to put more miles on it than she had before she let me behind the wheel, so, it's a, it's a long way down there.
It's probably a lot faster if she never had it going either.
Well, that's probably true.
Yeah, he gets no tickets.
Yeah, we got, we drew the attention of the state troopers, and, but they were very kind, so, anyway, it's a very smooth riding vehicle, I'll just say that. The work down there was centered mostly around strategic planning with respect to the, certainly, the legislative agenda for KACCt as we prepare to go into the next legislative session, and we had a facilitator there who took us through that process, and so Linda Fund will be submitting a report, a summary of that soon, and as soon as I get it, I will forward it all to you. But essentially, the, you know, the agenda's not changing a whole lot, we still need to go after full funding for Senate Bill 155, funding the, you know, full funding of the formula for reimbursement for us, still working on the collaborative efforts with Kansas Connection, and the student centering on, between community colleges and state universities, even K-12 there, so the work continues in those areas. We did discuss the Regents, the new appointments of the Regents, we saw and heard from Regent Murgia just a little while ago, and so, Dr. Gibbons and I had some conversations about sponsoring and hosting some of our legislators, and setting up a series of meetings with them, some one-on-ones, or possibly even a delegation meeting for the entire delegation, maybe trying to lure them to the new Tech Ed Center, and showcase our culinary arts program, for example, and so on and so forth. So, we've got other discussions that will continue to occur, and as we move forward. Dr. Gibbons indicated the next meeting is scheduled first week, first weekend in December, and that meeting is in Coffeyville, so we'll be planning to go down there for that. Most of you probably know that Gail Shaw retired from the KACCt office, her position has not been filled yet, although Linda thought she was getting very, very close to it. So, it really was sort of an odd meeting, this is the first meeting I've ever been to, that Gail wasn't there, and wasn't quite, maybe, the same level of organization and preparation exhibited there, although Linda and the facilitator did a really nice job. The new president at Cali welcomed us, and they were very gracious hosts for the event. And the meeting was well-attended, nearly all presidents were there, and trustees from nearly all of the colleges, maybe one college not there, but it was good, it was a really good meeting. And Mary Ann, you're free to look at these things that I brought back. We also did look at the audit, and there were no issues or problems with the audit on the KACCt finances, so, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Do you have anything else? Okay, any other committees?
You say September, they go to Coffeyville?
No, December.
December, the first weekend?
First weekend. I believe it's a Sunday, Monday format, too, not a Friday, Saturday.
Sunday, Monday.
I believe it's eighth and ninth.
You want me to give out my Sunday?
December 8th and 9th. I didn't set the meeting date, so, whether you attend or not is completely and entirely up to you. Okay, item, Agenda item 14, Unfinished Business. We've got some dates, board, that we need to consider with regard to the Board Effect software and the iPad there, and so, some proposed dates that I've been handed at this time include tomorrow, between 1:00 and 2:30, I'm sorry, Thursday, well, wait a minute, yeah, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, between 1:00 and 2:30, or between 2:30 and 4:00 o'clock, or the 25th, September 25th, the following week, between 10:00 AM and 11:30.
What day is that, September 25th?
Should be Tuesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, that's right.
I can tell tomorrow.
Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday. The 19th, Thursday, not tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, okay, as long as you have it early, 1:00 to 2:30.
What was next, the 25th?
Okay, let me give them to you again, I apologize for messing that up, it's September the 19th, which is Thursday. The times available are 1:00 PM to 2:30 PM, again, on the 19th, 2:30 PM to 4:00 PM, or September 25th, 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Baz, was it your intention to try to get us all together, or can we split up?
I can't. You're just going to have to give me my, none of those times work for me.
I think we're going to have to probably look.
At night?
I try to do it as fast as possible.
Sure, that would be the earliest, so.
So, can we go to, does he intend to go to any one of those three?
No, he, that's why, that's why I asked him, he'd like to get us all... He'd like to get us all together initially for the first initial meeting, and then we can break up into one and two and three ons or whatever.
How about the, I don't know, I have the 30th.
Can Peggy work with us possibly to suggest?
I don't know, the, just because we have the meeting on the 30th, the special board meeting, so not, that has to be around my schedule, but I, because I had to free it up, I'm available from 3:00 on, so if the others could meet before, I hate to say after, I could meet pretty late, but we already have a meeting, so if, and then, and we all probably are going to be there.
But it wouldn't be here, though.
Oh, you're not going to be here?
No, I said it's not here.
That meeting is an MVP office.
Does that matter, the location?
Well, it depends on the amount of time.
Imagine he needs us here for the lab? Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay.
We got one September 30th, so already we're in shape for that.
It needs to be here. This meeting with Baz needs to be here.
You can't meet with Baz over there.
All right.
I will work with Peggy to provide a full...
Some possible dates, whatever, and, okay.
Because that, of course, that next week is going to be tough for those of us going to the, to Seattle, that first week in October. Huh? Yeah.
You could do it in Seattle.
Sure.
All right.
Chairman Ash, if I might, please. My apologies, I forgot to bring this to you earlier. Thank you, Leota. A reminder, if you hadn't seen the signs or got the notices when we sent them out, there is a forum at 1:30 Thursday afternoon in Room 2705 with the first candidate for student, Dean of Student Services, and then Friday at 2:00 and Friday at 3:00.
Okay. So Thursday at 1:00?
Thursday at 1:30.
1:30.
Friday at 2:00 and 3:00.
Friday at 2:00 and 3:00.
Thank you, Leota.
Dean Walker, you be sending out some information about that dinner theater or whatever it is you're going to have in October?
Yeah. Can't do anything else.
Thank you.
Okay.
Don, I'd like, before we leave, kind of didn't get to the Emporia State Report again that we have at our table. I just think that's such an important, I don't want to get into it, but everybody just needs to realize again that the KCK students are doing better at Emporia than everybody else. And I think that's, that's an important report we get every year, and it's a good indication of the good work we're doing, so. Hope everybody got, everybody gets a chance. Thank you, Mike, for giving this to us.
Oh, you're welcome.
And it's always positive to get this report, see how well our students are doing. So just didn't want to let the meeting go by without having said that, so.
So noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion on my left to adjourn. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.
There it is.